Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 26, 6:00 PM. If I could have you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Daniel Wills, Chandler Acres Baptist Church, 705 Chandler Acres Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us go to our Father in heaven. We thank you for this time that you've given us to serve the people. We thank you for those who are willing to come today and just give of their time and their efforts to meet the needs of the people. And that, Father, even in government, there are much things that weigh on their minds. They have their own families and other things that involve their life, but yet they come and give of their time. So, Father, I ask you to give them wisdom beyond their own understanding, Father, that you would bless them, put a hedge around them and protect them. And, Father, we lift up the officer who was buried today, but her memory will last on, as we know, police officers give so much of their time and put their life on the line, and this is but a sad reminder today. Thank you, Father, for the privilege of serving you. In these things we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Wills. Item number two, Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Here.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Councilman Blood?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to that motion that we correct page five where it says, "Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the camp host agreement," not "the sign."
Did you get that, Sabrina?
Second.
Page...
I didn't remember. Say that again, Councilman Blood.
In reference to the campground host agreement, it says, "Approve and authorize the mayor 'the' sign, not 'to' sign." It should say "to" sign.
Is that in the minutes from... It's the minutes from last meeting, Sabrina?
The minutes are part of the consent agenda.
But we have to do that during the...
It would be approval of the minutes.
Am I messing up the agenda?
No, hold off on your motion.
Okay.
Yep.
For the minutes.
Keep it under consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
I remove my second.
I withdraw mine as well.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Mr. Cook?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion...
You don't need to make a motion. Just ask that if you would.
I'd like to remove the approval of the minutes from the May 11, 2015 meeting.
Councilman Blood?
And I'd like to make my amendment as previously stated.
We will do that when we get to it now. So, we're just... We're passing it...
Now you...
I have a motion for... To pass the consent agenda less with the removal of the item of the minutes from last meeting.
Do we need a second for that?
No.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Then you'll go to item C.
Now, under 3C, approval of the minutes of the May 11, 2015 meeting of the city council.
Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we delay taking action on this until our next meeting, on the minutes from May 11, 2015.
Do you want to state why, Mr. Preister?
I don't believe we've had an opportunity to review that as a council.
So, we need a second? Or do we just...
No, we need a second.
We need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote. Thank you. Item four, approval of claims under consent. Item five, special presentations. 5A, presentation, not LED lighting, investment-grade audit proposal. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, everybody. Once again, we have another presentation regarding LED lighting proposal. Today, I have Mr. Peter Hinkel with us. He's going to... He is with Schneider Electric, and he is going to share the research he has done regarding the city of Bellevue's street lighting and the LED conversions. Peter will be handing out some information to you and his business card in case there's any questions that come up later on that are not answered tonight.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. I speak loud enough anyway, so I'm sure you'll be able to hear me just fine. But first and foremost, I wanted to thank Larry, Jeff, and Rich, obviously, for the hard work that they've already put into this program, starting up and looking at and discussing LED conversion within the city of Bellevue. You know, we're at a very pivotal time in energy and sustainability, but more importantly, we're at a time when these kind of programs and projects are really starting to have better payoffs, better return on investments for city and cities in being able to provide more than just LED conversion, but being able to provide newer technologies that the city's going to be able to benefit from for years to come. So, what I'm really going to take you through today is understanding that, kind of in my conversations with Larry, you've got a pretty good idea about what performance contracting is. You've kind of heard about the what it is, the process. I want to focus today on really the net benefit for the city of Bellevue and what's really to come through a partnership with Schneider Electric. So, to start off with, let's see, I can make this work, give you kind of a brief overview of who we are as a company. Thirty-six billion dollars in sales in 2013. We've got the financial backing to support energy savings performance contract, 156,000 employees. So, we're an international global company. More importantly, we've got about 650 right here within the state of Nebraska. Those are open Omaha, as well as one of our plants down in Lincoln. We're a very diverse company. My group, which is called the Energy and Sustainability Services Group, we focus and solely do energy performance contracting programs. So, we come in, we analyze, we develop a program and a project, and then we guarantee the results on the back end. Most importantly, and something that we take very seriously, is we've never been involved in litigation through an energy savings performance contract project. And I'm going to repeat that probably a couple of times within this project and within this proposal because it really talks about the ethical approach that we take when we develop a program like this. You know, the reason it's... I think it's taken a while to get to this stage where we're coming up and having multiple vendors come up and talk about their companies is because there's a trust factor that really has to be built with any company you're about to select, any kind of a partnership, especially a 15-year partnership, that they're guaranteeing you savings on the back end. And really, the reason that I think we've never been involved in negotiations, we really stand behind what we say we're going to do. If we tell you we're going to get something done in a certain amount of time, it's on a two-year window beyond that that you're going to allow us to move forward. We're going to get it done. From a guaranteed savings standpoint, you know, we've got over 560 of these contracts that we've done nationally. We've written checks to 33 of our clients, and that's important. That's not a political public image kind of a thing. That's us standing behind the word of what we're going to do and following through with our projects. So, with all that being said, how is this going to work? What is it? And I'll spend just a couple of minutes on two pieces here that I think are the most important, strictly because you've seen probably a lot of similar slides of this at this point. And, you know, we're going to be able to create a new revenue stream, but what's more important is it's legal and what the legal ramifications are within the state of Nebraska. That's a little bit smaller than it is on my piece of paper, but essentially, there's legislation in the state that allows us to take out debt terms for up to 30 years to repay these kind of programs. They're guaranteed with a guaranteed bond, but more importantly, they're also guaranteed through the International Performance Measurement Verification Protocol, which is an industry standard that most of these energy or ESCOs are going to use. But again, it comes down to standing behind that guarantee and ensuring that year after year, the city is seeing the dollars and the expectations and the performance on the project that you would select and that you would help us to develop. We're talking about street light and LED conversion tonight, but certainly, we can help with facilities or any other infrastructure that you might want to look at under any kind of an investment grade audit or an agreement with Schneider Electric. We can help to cool down this building, so to speak, and do so in an energy-efficient way. We can help to look at controls and lighting within your own facilities, as well as other infrastructures, even looking at vehicle and fleet maintenance, as well as a possible savings opportunity. So, the next kind of piece that we're going to dive into is what's our role? Who are we as Schneider Electric? Where are we coming from? You know, we are truly a turnkey provider to the city of Bellevue. And I say that, and I talk about it, and I could probably get into each one of these, and being that I have 15 minutes, I don't want to hit on kind of the obvious ones. We're going to come in and we're going to work with you to help develop a financial model or a business case to develop this program that will self-fund in a matter of, we're estimating about 10 years or less, for an LED conversion project. We're going to manage the construction piece. We're even going to have a performance guarantee of up to about 10 years. It kind of depends on the financing, but it usually matches that term. But you can extend it out to 30 years, which has a little bit different wrinkle to it, but we can certainly talk about that as we get into the investment grade audit. And a lot of the savings or the financing piece will be dealt with Rich and his group in determining what's the best and most appropriate way to borrow money. I'll talk about that here in just a little bit. Support services, you know, we have a whole team dedicated to developing and really looking at, from a back-end standpoint, the guaranteed savings that we're providing. So, whenever anything or any issues come up during that warranty period or during our term of our guarantee, you're going to have somebody who's going to be dedicated to the city of Bellevue, whose sole job is to make sure that you actually see guaranteed savings on the back end. They're not working on construction. They're not an engineer that helps design anything up front. They're working with our team, but more importantly, their whole job is to basically make sure that you're seeing the dollars that we're guaranteeing you. And I think that's really important when you're talking about the size of investment and the amount of money we're talking about in terms of a savings guarantee back to the city. And then finally, the one I think that is always missed with these projects is how do we get this out to the public? What's our outreach? How do we talk to people? How do we let them know what's going on? And how do we make them feel comfortable with the type of work that the city's talking about? You know, it's not as complex maybe as changing out someone's water meter, but certainly, when you're talking about going to LED streetlights, it's going to have a new look within the city. How do we use that to set the city of Bellevue apart from its peers, from La Vista, from even Omaha, and trying to make sure that you guys are on the cutting edge and you're getting as much, if not more, recognition than anyone else in the area as you start to do these programs and these types of projects? I think the public image and public affairs and making sure that the community is aware of the good things that are being done within city government is one of the biggest pieces or biggest roles that we can help you to play. And we have a huge marketing team and a staff that can help develop those kind of projects, whether that's online web imaging and marketing, or it's actual events during the project construction or even once the construction's complete. So, that's kind of our role as a performance contractor or as an ECO, if you will, an energy services company. Let's talk a little bit about your project. So, when we talk about the future of streetlights, we've looked at this in a number of different cities. We've actually done kind of an interesting kind of a program up in the city of Chicago, looking at what they're calling their Smart Cities Initiative or Smart Streetlights Initiative, excuse me. And when you look at the value of a streetlight, it's not just replacing LED lights. I mean, that is the catalyst for energy efficiency. That's the catalyst for savings and sustainability, but that's where it just begins. A lot of the things that cities are looking at is how do you take an infrastructure or a piece of infrastructure that's typically forgotten about by most cities? You know, it keeps the lights on. That's an awesome safety feature. That's helping out with the city's image and making sure that it's a bright, vibrant community in the evening hours. But now, how do you take an infrastructure and turn that into something that's actually got value to it? How do you set up on a main street warning lights within that same program? You know, LEDs have a lot of functionality that allow us to warn citizens if there's a tornado coming or if there's an emergency situation that needs to take place. And we can start to look at, during an investment grade audit, what are the additional features that the city feels like would not only help from energy efficiency standpoint, dimming and being able to control them remotely, but also from a safety and reliability standpoint to make this become more of a true asset and not just a piece of infrastructure that the city might own. So, when it comes to your program and what we've looked at, we've started with the conversion to LED as being obviously one of the biggest pieces here. That LED technology, looking at about 4,700-plus streetlights and converting those over, definitely reducing the bottom line to your citizens. We'll get to kind of what those numbers here on the next slide look like. Maintenance options. Part of our proposal is to provide the city, if you were to move forward with any kind of a pole purchase, options in how you're going to actually maintain those on the back end. You know, that's an important factor as well. If you're talking about not only LED conversion, but also the opportunity to purchase, you're now actually taking the responsibility of those cobra heads, as well as those poles in that case, and making sure that you have a plan. You know, it's not necessarily Schneider Electric coming in here and providing you a full-service maintenance contract. It might be a hybrid of having city employees being able to work on the poles and getting the proper training and education. It could be actually having an on-call maintenance staff available that's run by the city and that we help you to facilitate and set up. There's a lot of different options there that we want to be able to explore during an investment grade audit that are going to have pluses and minuses across the city. And obviously, working with Jeff, we want to make sure that from a public work standpoint, we have an understanding and a plan in place should anything happen or go wrong with those poles over a period of time. And then certainly, ownership of the poles. We can certainly provide negotiation assistance through our team of consultants, legal experts, different individuals from a construction management piece to help provide you any sort of guidance or oversight there. So, if you look at the sheet that I passed out on the backside, it gives you more of an in-depth look at kind of what the financials of the project really come out to be. So, when we put this together, this data's coming from, I guess, about, oh, middle of fall, beginning of fall of last year. So, there's probably going to be some updates. I know that there's a little bit more cost than 986,000 that you're seeing just from Larry and I talking briefly, but really, what we're looking at is about $376,000 in just the LED conversion. Where the additional $13,000 comes in is that's speaking with members of OPPD and their plan to go from a mercury vapor to a high-pressure sodium installment, and that's actually going to increase the total cost by about $5 per pole for each one of those lights. So, if they were to move forward with that, your costs would increase, but really, from energy efficiency standpoint, it might be a more efficient system. You're not going to see the benefit. But by converting to LED and converting all of those to LED, you'll see an additional $13,000. When we get into the cash flow that you're looking at, you'll notice I left that off just because I wanted to be kind of as simple as possible at this point, just focusing on the LED conversion. And right now, that works out in our terms to be a simple payback of about seven to about eight years without any interest. When you look at interest, you're looking right around 10 years or so. And a lot of the financing options that we have available to us are going to give us a variety of variables in terms of the term length, the interest that you would... Interest that obviously you'd be using, as well as if you look at some of the other financial options from a federal standpoint and federal grants and rebates and incentives that might be out there for these kind of projects. You might have to use certain labor rates or wage rates that, at that case, at that point, we would want to definitely look at, is that the benefit versus the interest rate based upon the cost of that program? But really, it's a comprehensive solution, as I've said. You know, you've got about seven, a little over $7 million worth of dollars that can be leveraged back into this program, and that's over a 15-year period. When you look at the 10-year period on the back of that, you'll see that by paying it off quickly, you're going to be able to even generate even more revenue on the back end of this deal. And the endless benefits from a functionality standpoint are really there, as we talked about briefly. So, key funding, I hit on this just a second ago. Really, the value here and what we want to be able to provide, we are not a financier by any stretch of the imagination. We want to work with the city to try to find the lowest cost of money, whether that's appropriating dollars, whether that's looking at it and saying, "We've got the funding available," or it's looking at the different programs currently in your state. You know, Nebraska's got a very competitive but available low-interest interest at about 2.5%. There's some qualified energy construction bonds out there from the federal government at 1%. Typically, though, most of these projects are funded through a tax-exempt lease purchase. That's just been a very standard program that's been in place, and we'll certainly look with Rich and try to understand what's going to be the best value and the best bang for the buck for the city. Finally, the city of Bellevue, the partnership that we really want to focus on and what we want to be able to create is obviously the revenue piece. You know, we come in here and our job is to essentially shift risk off the shoulders of the city. We want to find a way to take on that guarantee and to guarantee that over that full 10- to 15-year term and provide you with the assurance that those dollars are going to be there on the back end. And, you know, really, when it comes to selecting a partner for this kind of program, it comes down to looking at our past history. You know, we're all going to be very similar in terms of what we're going to say. In fact, I bet you I'm probably very similar to what you've heard the last time and will probably hear again. But it really comes down to looking at the past history and understanding, you know, where have they done this? What's the results? Have they really stood up and provided the services that they said they would? You know, I told you about the 30-plus, 33 projects that we have that had a shortfall in at least year one or year two of those programs that we wrote a check to. I give you every name of every single one of those individuals and have you call every single one because they're our best clients. Those are the ones that understand that, yes, we're creating revenue. Yes, we're going to be replacing some technologies and making a big improvement, but in the end, what we really did was shift the risk off of those clients to be able to provide a service and a valuable partnership that they're able to then use and get a lot of work out of. So, other than that, I've got just a brief timeline, but I know that this is going to be one of those things that we'll be working with Larry and obviously the city and the city council on to try to determine what's the best approach to these kind of programs. I see a few of you are squinting, so I'd be glad to at least send you all a copy of this presentation if needed, but I'll kind of open the floor to questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Preister?
Thank you. Schneider Electric is going to have to make a profit in addition to guaranteeing the city that we will make a profit essentially and pay this off. So, my question is, why would we hire you or anybody else to do it when we could do it ourselves or do it with OPPD? They don't have to make a profit, and we keep our own profit, so we can do it faster and save more money.
Well, I think that that's... There's a couple of different answers to that question, and I do appreciate the question. One being, from a financial standpoint, I think we can get this done in a very quick and expedited manner. I mean, we can get this done in a matter of a few months in terms of the actual construction implementation. That allows you to see the guaranteed savings much quicker than maybe a spread-out process. And I also know, talking with OPPD directly, yes, they're interested, obviously, in converting these over, or at least even the discussion of the purchase of the poles, but it's also taken them almost two or three years to get where they are today. And I worry that, while providing a lot of faith in them, and I'm not doubting their abilities, that is a financial machine for them from a lighting standpoint and a streetlighting standpoint. To get them to move quickly, I think, will be a difficult charge. I think that we can see a very quick movement and quick action. The second piece is that risk transfer and that guarantee. You know, what we're going to do is not only guarantee, you know, from a construction standpoint with no change orders up front, but on the back end, make sure that you're seeing the performance that you want to see. You know, these LED streetlights, well, yes, they have a rated life of about 15 to 20 years. There are things that are going to go wrong during the program, during the process, and it's going to be our responsibility to make sure that we make sure the city doesn't get adversely affected by any issues that might pop up from a performance side.
The experience in having done it, getting it done faster and moving ahead where you don't have, as OPPD might, a vested interest in selling the electricity and cutting their own sales as a result.
Well, I also think with OPPD, the one thing... The one thing to focus on is obviously getting the right negotiated rate. You know, negotiating a rate with them is going to be key to your savings and to the value that you're going to see out of this program. We've got a team of people. They actually bought a company called Summit Energy several years ago, who do nothing but the supply-side piece. So, we would bring them in from a rate negotiation, a tariff negotiation standpoint, compare both OPPD, what they've done in the city of Blair, to also your situation as well, and try to negotiate based upon pure fact from a supply-side, not an end-user side, but a supply-side standpoint of trying to establish a rate that's going to be fair to both OPPD and the city of Bellevue as well, more importantly, the city of Bellevue.
Then, could you answer why it would be to Bellevue's benefit to actually own the poles?
Well, and I think that, again, if you remember the slide, it kind of had the multiple array of pictures and ideas. The idea that a piece of infrastructure like the streetlight poles and looking at small-cell technology, working with things like AT&amp;T and Verizon to provide better cellphone service, looking at even Wi-Fi as a capability within the future, your AMR/AMI systems, looking at safety as another big piece within this program and being able to have cameras and emergency standpoint and emergency lighting, those are all big things that come into play. A lot of times, that takes pole ownership, not just the LED conversion to actually get those done, because you're talking about a piece of infrastructure.
And what about having the solar collectors, solar generators on top, so you don't even have to have the wires or the installation or pay for the electricity?
Those are great opportunities. What we've seen when we started to pencil those out is they don't always pay for themselves. You know, we're in a location here within the Midwest that we're not quite California. We're certainly not Hawaii, and we're definitely not the East Coast in terms of just KWH and hours and cost of electricity. It's pretty low. So, when you look at solar as an opportunity, it has its place, and it has a great opportunity from a renewable technology standpoint, but we're talking about that small of scale. You don't always get your best bang for your buck in return on investment. But there might be some opportunities within the city. For example, if there's a trail or a park that maybe has issues with lighting that we would need to look at, those are great opportunities for the exact kind of technology you're talking about, where electricity might not be readily available rather than supplying it. You now have an opportunity to move forward with an LED solar array like you're speaking of.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? See none? Thank you, Mr. Hinkel.
Thank you.
Item number six, liquor license. 6A, St. Bernadette Catholic Church, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine during the annual parish festival at 2,640 South 42nd Street, July 12, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Is there anyone here to represent? If there's anything you'd like to say?
No, no, Madam Mayor. Thank you for hearing our appeal here, and I don't know if there's anything else I need to do.
If you could state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Andrew Flanagan.
Thank you. Just go ahead and sign in. And I'll now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none? I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer during the annual parish festival at 7,600 South 42nd Street on July 12, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Mr. Modri?
Yes, Mayor. Just to let you know, I will be abstaining for personal religious reasons from all the liquor license votes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. 6B, Lisa Anne Frida, manager, application for Class 1 liquor license held by Nebraska Entertainment, Inc., doing business as Twin Creek Cinema at 3,909 Rayner Parkway. Is there anyone here to represent? Welcome. Anything you'd like to say? You could state your name.
My name's Lisa Frida. I'm proud to be part of the Bellevue city, so I don't have really anything else to say. This is my first time, so...
It's pretty easy. It's pretty easy. There's questions for the council, they'll ask from the council. I'll open for a public hearing so any citizen can speak on this issue for or against, but go ahead and sign in, and I'll open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion of approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, manager application for the Class I liquor license held by Nebraska Entertainment, Inc., doing business as Twin Creek Cinema at 3909 Rayner Parkway.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item C, Repasallc, doing business as Patricia Catering. Application for special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, distilled spirits during a reception at the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, on June 12th, 13th, and 20th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Pat Regan. I am the owner of Patricia Catering, and I am asking for your consideration on item C and D for the special designated permits at the Firefighters Hall. Do you have any questions?
Council have any questions? I'll open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for Repasallc, DBA Patricia Catering, for their application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the reception at the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, on June 12th, 13th, and 20th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. I'll do the same on six D. And we say that Repisa, Repisa is the LLC doing business as Patricia Catering. Application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a reception at the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, on June 21st and 27th, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m. Need a motion from the council? Mr. Carmichael?
Opened up for public hearing.
I'll have a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for Repasallc, DBA Patricia Catering, for their application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, distilled spirits during a recreation, excuse me, a reception at the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighters Hall, 2108 Franklin Street, on June 21st and 27th, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Item seven, ordinance for adoption. Third reading, seven A, ordinance number 3810. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3810. An ordinance to amend section 20-8 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the discharge of firearms or dangerous missiles in the city of Bellevue to provide for the repeal of section 20-8 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Good evening. Once again, before you today, to thank you for your consideration of the ordinance change allowing organized archery events. We have a couple of members in the audience as well, and in case there's any trick questions, I refer to the senior members of the club. As an update, I would like to let you know that I did meet with the Fontanel Forest folks, Janine Lackey and Josh Preister. They're very excited to have the opportunity to partner with AHOMO for an event. They also are looking to partnering with the AHOMO Archery Club to help train the youth for their youth turkey hunts. They are scheduling to control the population, and they would like to possibly partner with us if we can come up with a, an agreement that'll, for both parties, that will work for both parties. And it should be a very good experience for all involved, I think.
Councilman Blood?
I'd encourage you to speak to Councilman Hanson about the turkey problem in his ward. I can have that today, actually.
There are a lot of turkeys that live on my street. Now, actually, it's been brought up, actually, by several of the neighbors. There must be fifty of them on our street between flocks of thirty and forty, and they, I know they can deer hunt there, and I know they have to go through the city and get a, show a police officer they can shoot a bow and arrow, and that they also have to have landowner permit and then come to the council, but all of them asked, why wouldn't they be able to hunt, you know, with, you know, the proper licensing and whatever like that in the city of Bellevue, which I would be happy to give them permission.
That would be a good project for you and some archery individuals.
I don't even shoot a bow and arrow, but I know Steve does.
The, the, the one thing I learned about Fontanel Forest is that it's technically in the county, and it's not within the city limits, so this is an opportunity for AHOMO to partner with them, maybe even to get an outdoor range put in in the forest somewhere down there. But what I liked is the connection with the local youth and training them on how to, you know, archer, compete, or even hunt with a bow and arrow. Turkeys are a very cool and beautiful animal, but not only are they, can they be a nuisance, they, they can be very dangerous. If your dog were to get loose, the burr bars on their, talons on their feet, they'll, they'll cut a dog to ribbons. And so, we need to definitely, if they have an issue at Fontanel Forest with turkeys, I, for one, as an AHOMO member, will be happy to help them out, so.
Councilman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 3810.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for a public hearing, second reading, ordinance number 3811. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3811. An ordinance to amend section 4.13, ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to accessory buildings and uses. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. Mr. Schuchek?
Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to say this is kind of a cleanup item for this ordinance. There is a contradictory provisions in the zoning ordinance with regard to accessory structures. One, section 4.13, indicates that the maximum size can be 3,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 1,200 square feet. There are other sections in the specific zoning districts that allow up to 3,000 square feet, so what we are doing is just adding the words to section 4.13, point 09, numbers four and five, unless otherwise provided, so that will take care of the contradiction between the two sections.
Mr. Modri?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chris, understand what you're doing there. For the agricultural district, there aren't any provisions back in section five regarding the size of accessory structures there, so does the wording in section four then limit accessory structures in an agricultural district to 1,200 square feet?
No, in, in the ag district, we typically don't regulate any of those types of buildings.
Right.
So, they can currently be, and, and it's really just regulated right now by the coverage, the ground coverage as stated in that section.
Okay.
We would allow a building in the ag district even larger than 3,000 square feet.
I would certainly hope so. Does the wording in section four also say AG district as well, though?
It doesn't.
Irrevised wording?
Nothing in section 4.13 refers to any of the zoning districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be on June the eighth. Item 8B, ordinance number 3812. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3812. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article III of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street and Chandler Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing, and the third and final reading will also be on June 8. Item number nine, ordinance for an induction. First reading, none. Ten, public hearing on matters. Other ordinances, none. Eleven resolutions, none. Item 12, current business. 12 A, B, C, D, and E is under consent. 12 F, approve the low bid from Castle Materials Midwest Company, doing business as Omni Engineering, in the amount of $2,936,305.10, the 2015 overlay projects, and approve the mayor to sign the contract. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the low bid for Old Castle Materials Midwest Company, DBA Omni Engineering, in the amount of $2,936,305.10, for the 2015 overlay projects, and approve the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Modri?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Understand, the original budget was about 1.6 million, and we're coming in now at 2.9 million. 650 of that was from some added, 650,000 from some added projects. That leaves close to about 650,000 more than what we had estimated. Can you go through that a little bit, Jeff?
Well, the 650,000 is for work that's going to be done on 370, and last year, we received relinquishment money from the state of Nebraska for just over two and a half million, so that's coming out of that portion of it. The 1.6 originally estimated, there was about a 30% increase in asphalt cost this year. I know it's a huge upswing, but that has a lot to do, I think, with Google and with the, with Stratcom being constructed, because all the contractors are converged on those two projects, jacking up the price, but I hope it's an anomaly year, and that goes down next year.
Yeah, I, I hope so, or we need to try and account for it.
We're going to have to either cut back, go back to maintenance mode again, or do something different, but yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns or discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 11G, approve the request to purchase a set of four-column lifts from the Clay's Pump and Equipment Company in the amount of $54,159.13. Councilman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request to purchase a set of four-column lifts from Clay's Pump and Equipment Company in the amount of $54,159.13.
Second by Mr. Preister. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, were these, was this purchased because it's sole source, sole, excuse me, sole source? Was it because of the condemnation of the lifts, or was this a budgeted item?
It was in the CIP. For some reason, it didn't get in the budget. I'm not sure exactly why, but it was in the CIP. But last year, we had to replace four of them because one of our lifts was condemned, and so we replaced that with four of them. This year, we had the other lift, which we were anticipating, we knew that was going to happen. It become condemned also, so we have to replace them with these other six lifts. The reason they're sole sources is because they interface with each other, so they, when they're all tied together, they come up at the same, at the same pace, so to speak, and with all six lifts, or I'm sorry, with all the lifts in place, these have the ability to even lift the largest aerial fire truck that we have in the city.
Hey, thank you.
Any other discussion? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12H, approve and authorize mayor to sign the city administrator's employment contract. Councilman Blood?
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Mr. Cook?
Mayor, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Make a motion for that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is five to one.
Thank you. I'll now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the mayor to authorize to sign the city administrator's employment contract, please do so at this time.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I have not seen the contract yet, and maybe it's available, but the last few times I've asked for it, I haven't seen it. But I'm just wondering for one thing, is there a termination clause in there in the contract that, there wasn't one in the attorney's contract, which there should have been, but, and, but I'd like to see a termination clause that any time during these four years, if, for some reason, Mr. Berlowitz is terminated, that, that there isn't extra perks and extra benefits given to him or any city administrator after that. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan will respond.
The contract was in the packet that goes on the website as of, I believe, Wednesday night. There has been one small change, and that was to put the definite amount of the salary in. We had a salary level in there that was subject to an increase, and we've put that up. It is also sitting on the back counter.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there others that would like to speak at this time? See none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not sure who to ask the questions to, but I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Under section five, the benefits, five B, and I think it's repeated in another phase, when it refers to similar benefits as a retirement pension or deferred compensation, I know at the beginning of it, we inserted the words "other than police or fire", is, does that pertain through that whole paragraph?
To answer your question, other than police and fire, it was changed where you had requested to do so?
Right.
And it does say "other than police and fire" there as well. But essentially, his benefits are going to be similar to what we're paying directors, or benefits that directors would receive.
So, it would be, I, I'm really, I just want to make clarification on some type of a retirement or pension. Is this the same pension that all employees pay into excluding police and fire, where I think the city contributes 6%, and then the employee contributes 6%, and it's like, I believe it's called a 414H? Is that what we're discussing here?
We're discussing the same plans that, for retirement and so forth, that everybody else receives except police and fire.
Thank you. My second concern is under section 5F, where it says that Berlowitz shall be entitled to contribution towards his or her family health insurance premium after retirement and employment from the city. It used to say "shall not". We've removed the word "not", so is this similar to what our employees get, or is this something that if he retires, is, we pay his health insurance premium, I guess, for life?
No. No. What gets paid is the same benefit that was received by other employees, and, and actually, as I look at that, we probably just could have eliminated that paragraph because it would, it basically is taken care of in paragraph B.
So, can I make a motion to eliminate that paragraph?
I think that you can, Dan. I don't think, I think B addresses it.
I think as long as it's clear that I'm entitled to be eligible for the same retirement benefit that every other civilian employee is.
And, and I, it's in a hand, right. And, and, and Mr. Berlowitz, what I'm getting to is what is in our handbook. And, and to me, I just, to me, this doesn't close it.
I, we, we were working on this for almost two weeks straight, and I saw that, and I kind of thought about it afterward, and I said, since we're not going to eliminate him from it, we really could just eliminate the paragraph, and I have no problem doing that.
And I'm, I'm on the same page as what is in the personnel handbook.
That's, that's all I was asking for.
Yes.
All right. I'll make that motion when it is appropriate. And then, the last question, well, depending on what conversation we have, is on section, I believe it was 14, now it's considered section 13, job performance evaluation. It refers to that it shall not exceed 5%. So, if we do a performance evaluation on Mr. Berlowitz, it can go up to 5%, and then that's added back as now his base salary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did we sign some contracts on performance evaluations for employees that they could go up to 2.5% on the C? I'm just using it for comparison.
It varies, it varies by union. Some hourly employees have step plans.
Right.
Okay, those step plans, on average, are 2.5% per step. That does not take into account comparability, it's just step performance. I'm under contract, so I have no step plan, per se, and so, I, when I proposed this agreement, I agreed, self-imposed, to cap myself at a maximum, and that's determined by the mayor based upon my performance, up to 5%. It can be less than 5%, it can be up to 5%, so that's what that means.
But basically, what we're saying is, everything involved, performance, anything, the max is 5%.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so current salary now, you did get five percent increase just right now, and so that's one forty-three, nine seventy-seven is
Correct.
Current number, okay. And just want to clarify my understanding, kind of, of the various benefits under various circumstances or situations.
Can I just, for clarity, that salary takes effect June first?
On June first, okay, thank you. In the event of a resignation, under this, then, we would be liable for a two-month salary? If Mr. Burlowitz signs a release?
Potentially correct. He has the option of signing a release, releasing all claims with the city. And in exchange for that, we would pay him two months of his base salary.
Them base salary?
Yes.
Currently, that would be, for June first, that'd be close to twenty-four thousand, I mean, three nine ninety-six.
That sounds accurate.
And then, under any circumstance, he'd get whatever benefits were owed, paid time off, that might be accrued at that point.
PTO is considered earned, and under his contract, they would be paid out, yes.
Okay. And in here, it says every, every year, he gets paid for PTO in excess of fifteen days. So he can carry fifteen days over into the next year. You're correct.
That's correct. Let me explain a little bit why we did that. We, there's a couple of reasons. There's some tweaks to this contract that are different than the employees' contracts, other employees' contracts, specifically for the reason that we didn't want to have him in a position of negotiating those contracts and benefiting from poor negotiation. So that was part of the reason behind it. The other reason behind it is that, for budgeting purposes, if we had, let's say he was here for an extended time, and all that PTO built up over years, we'd have a large amount of payout at the end of that.
Right.
Secondly, that when you pay the PTO out, we paid at the same salary as the time that it was earned. So we can also cap it in that manner. And so that was kind of the main driving behind that, is to essentially not have this gigantic accumulation account. And that's what we're having a little bit, to some extent, on some deals when we get hit soon here with the police department. We have a number of retirees. There's a makeup we have to do under the nineteen eighty-four change in law that if the count isn't sufficient to meet certain goals, that we have to pay money in. We don't want to have those big hits, and so the idea was to pay it out during those periods.
Absolutely, okay.
Mr. Burlowitz.
One thing I might object real quick, too, is that when I came to the city and negotiated my initial contract, I became the only employee with PTO. All other employees earn separate vacation, they're at separate sick leave, and they're able to accumulate vacation up to, they can carry over a hundred and twenty hours, which is similar to what's proposed in this contract. They're also able to earn, accumulate up to nine hundred and sixty hours of sick leave, be paid out. Mine's all in one lump sum. And there were some issues, there was concerns at the time I came, because we did have some former city officials, no longer here, that had some very large banks of sick leave and vacation. And the city had a huge liability. So I agreed to come in under a whole different menu, under PTO, and agreed to be paid out and not be able to accumulate. Obviously, that was never gonna happen again, and that's one of the, that's one of the objectives we've been striving for, for everybody.
All right, so.
Let me throw one more cent into it. This PTO issue is also kind of, for lack of a better term, my one little window, what I threw in here. Because in my opinion, I don't understand why we treat vacation or sick time differently. You're either at work or you're not at work. I don't care whether you're sitting on a beach in Cancun or you're, have the flu. You can't provide the work, and I don't understand why we treat those differently.
I understand, I tend to agree with that. So I guess the maximum PTO that could be paid out would be that fifteen days plus forty-two days you'd accrue over a year, you know, if you didn't use any of it during the year. So fifty-seven days total would be the max that would ever be possible to be accrued.
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right. So that'd be another two months or so. Then, under resignation, do any of the section five benefits in here carry over? Like the retirement for health?
The retirement health would carry over under section five. Rest of those benefits are essentially benefits that exist while you're, during the term of your employment. But that, that is a benefit that
Carries past.
Carries past, and I'll just say this, it's an interesting benefit. But it's citywide.
I know it's citywide. One I would like to eventually get rid of, citywide, but it's another point. Okay. All right, so that's resignation. If the term of the contract expires, you know, we run out the four years of mayor's term, and you don't get continued. Again, we'd have the two-month salary for a release.
That would be correct.
Okay, plus the paid time off, whatever it might have accrued. And as I understand it, also up to ten months of health insurance premiums, unless he picks up health insurance prior to that time.
That would be under a situation, and first of all, if he just retired on his own, that benefit would kick in under the general benefit. The ten months then gets kicked in if, for some reason, he was terminated without cause.
Okay, but just ending of the term of the contract, that wouldn't
No.
Okay.
It wouldn't apply, but indirectly, as long as that general employee benefit applies, that kicks in under that.
It kicks under that retirement health benefits.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I understand that better. If he's terminated for a just cause, accrued paid time off, anything else?
No, PTO always gets paid, but nothing else under for cause.
And for not for cause, then we would have ten months' salary, ten months, up to ten months of health insurance plus PTO.
That is correct. If the city came along and just said, Dan, you didn't do anything wrong, we just want to go a different direction, terminate, there would be ten months, in exchange for releasing the city from all claims, there would be a payment of ten months' salary.
So we would be released from all, all claims against us. Thank you, just wanted to get a understanding.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Blood.
I would like to thank staff and the legal department, because I know that on this particular issue, and the mayor as well, you've been presented with a lot of questions and concerns. And I think you've done a very effective job of answering those questions and concerns. And I know it hasn't been an easy task, and I want to say thank you for that. I want to add that I, as always, did my own research and compared this contract and the pay with ten other communities that are located within the central United States and have comparable financial, can't think of the word I want to say, have comparable economies to what Bellevue has. And in many ways, we're paying and giving our city administrator much less. Would I like to make a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year? You bet. But I'm not a city administrator, and so I can't compare what I want to make to what our city administrator deserves. But when you look at communities like Ames, Iowa, they offer comparable benefits, yet they pay their city administrator a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Downers Grove, Illinois, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Ankeny, Iowa, a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Normal, Illinois, I won't make it very long, a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Elmhurst, Illinois, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Joplin, Missouri, a hundred and fifty-eight. Moline, Illinois, a hundred and fifty-one. Sioux City, Iowa, a hundred and fifty. St. Louis Park, Minnesota, a hundred and sixty-two. Blue Springs, Missouri, a hundred and fifty-four. And I didn't just look for salaries that were more or comparable. What I looked for were economies that mirrored our own economy and populations between forty and fifty-five thousand, because we're right in the middle of that. And I know when we go into six-digit salaries and we look at these benefits, for most of the people in our community, that seems like a lot of money, and it is. But we also have to pay people with education, people with experience, comparable salaries to keep them in the ballpark and to keep them from losing, and to keep us from losing good experience. I know Councilman Preister and I are the only two that can really speak on what was going on with the city, especially our finances. When we came onto the council in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, I look at how far we've come and how much sounder we are financially. And a lot of that is attributed to our city administrator. This is one of the few things that the mayor has allowed, let me rephrase that. This is one of the few things that falls under the mayor's discretion. And she works with the city administrator on a daily basis. And she's very dependent on him, and it's been a very symbiotic and successful relationship. And so I'm always concerned, not that we're being cautious of money, because that's always a priority, but I want to make sure that when we pick apart things, that we're doing it for the right reason. And although I don't always agree with our city administrator, I do respect the job that he's done. I've heard nothing but positive from most of his management staff. And I'm gonna address some other things during the city administrator's report. But I'm very proud of the job that he's done, and you should be proud as well as council people. And when it comes to the contract and the financials, I think, comparably speaking, we're in the ballpark. We're not high, we're not low, we're kinda in the middle.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I voted no to reappoint Dan a couple of council meetings ago. And Carol, I, too, have done my research on comparabilities, on city administrator wages and benefits. And I find similar information to what you found. I don't know that that's right, and I don't know that that's wrong. It's a lot of money, and it's a lot of money and benefits for the city and the citizens to incur with respect to where we are. I came into this, when I voted no for reappointment, looking for leadership. I want to see that leadership, and I want to see that communication between the city administrator and the council and the citizens and employees for this city. And I know how I'm gonna vote today, and maybe my constituents will like it, maybe they won't. I don't know, but the issues that I need to have the city administrator address, we've spoken quite a bit about over the last six months. Excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for allowing us time to meet with you and Pat, on questions and concerns that we had on the original submittal. I don't know that I got everything that I wanted to see go in there. Certainly, I didn't, but there are two major points that I did get to go, get in there, and I appreciate that, so. Basically, Paul and Jim have spoken for the additional issues that I have, and I'll let my vote stand for where it is.
Mr. Modri.
I just wanted to point out one thing in the contract, numbers don't add up. In section three, A three, one through four, where we're portioning out the ten months, justification for the ten months.
Section three.
Section which section?
Section three, then go to A three, and the one through four, where we're saying how those ten months break out. It only adds up to nine months.
Number four should have two months in it.
Need to adjust that.
A three, four.
A three, four, should be two months.
Thank you, Mr. Modri. So the changes will be A three should read two months, and then also in section five F to eliminate the paragraph. Is that correct? So this is two changes. Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion that, under section five benefits, five F, that F will be completely removed.
Second. Second by Councilman Blood.
I'll add to my amendment, that under section
Three, A three. Four.
Four.
Three.
A, number four.
A three, number four, if that makes sense.
A three, number four, that'll be changed from one month to two months.
That's a motion, we need that second?
Yeah.
It's with the second, okay. Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one.
Thank you. And also in paragraph five, where the, Dan's contract or his evaluation is on my desk for your review. So I want to make sure I stated that, if you wanted to see his evaluation. Mr. Modri. So we need a revote. Please vote on the previous vote. On the amendment, yes, please vote. Thank you.
All voted yes.
We now need a motion on, I'm not a motion, a vote on the I'm completely lost now. It's too hot in here.
We have a motion on the floor, I believe.
The agreement is amended.
All right. Vote on the agreement as amended.
We don't need a second, though, we just need to vote.
That's correct. Yeah.
Yes, so please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Thank you. Mr. Burlowitz.
I appreciate the vote of confidence on my contract.
Item number thirteen, city administrator's report. Mr. Burlowitz.
Well, I was gone last week, so the report you have in the packet, actually, you had a memo from Assistant City Administrator Burks, who put the report together along with the directors. So staff are available, as usual, to answer any questions that the council may have.
Councilman Blood.
I actually have a question for Mr. Severson. Don't look so worried. So I'm reviewing our information over the last few years, and I see that you are working on the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen biennial budgeting process. And the thing that I was, the thing that I noted is that many of our department heads on their budgets are not only a little bit under their budget, but a considerable amount under their budget. Would that be accurate?
Depends on your definition of a lot.
Would you say that a substantial amount of our management team has kept their budgets below what was projected?
Yes, I agree with that.
And this has been an active, this has been, I don't know what it is about today, none of us are speaking. It's so hot in here tonight. So you're saying, this has been an active motion on their part, that they're doing this as part of the whatever base, performance-based management. We gotta go home, get some caffeine. Performance-based management, would you say that that partnering with that has helped this process?
I would say that that did help this process.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments on the administrator's report? Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, the only thing, I guess I'd want to echo Councilmember Blood's comment is that, yeah, this is due to a lot of hard work and good management and good budget management on the part of the management team and the directors. They've been very diligent in keeping on top of their budgets, and that clearly has allowed us to be in a much better financial position that we now allowed us to be in a much better financial position than we now are.
Mr. Cook.
Just real quick, there was a couple comments on the administrator's report pertaining to the budget. I'd like to know how are we moving on that? And I would ask that, like we did last year, we don't wait till the last day where we have to make the final vote, or else we have to have a special meeting. Are we moving in that direction?
Yes, we are. Our intent will be, right now, we've just, May 22nd was the deadline for departments has initially had their budget proposals in. Finance Department is now putting those together. Those will be coming to be initially reviewed, depending on those budget requests and our revenue projections for the next biennial period. We will then be meeting as management, top management with directors, to determine where we may have to look at having to make some adjustments, obviously, column adjustments, column reductions, or just clarification. There's never enough resources to cover all the requests, we know that, along with the capital improvement plan. That's also in hand-in-hand with the annual operating budget. Those will both be compiled, our intent will be to get preliminary numbers for your information towards the end of May, end of June, in advance, correct, Rich? He may correct me, by the way.
The council's going to see some preliminary but vetted numbers in June, early June. We're going to go through a process where we're going to roll up the numbers, we're going to talk to Dan about those, but before we, you know, start making serious decisions about it, we are, our intent is to share that with the council.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, that would be somewhat similar, or very similar to two years ago, when we were looking at significant concerns, and from a management standpoint, we identified some initial budgetary actions that we did bounce off the council to get input, that obviously had effect upon what we then moved forward with in terms of further and finalizing the development of that budget. We will do a public forum as part of our priority-based budgeting. We've just completed, of course, an online survey, citizen survey, to get citizen input regarding how they view the importance of the various services and programs that the city provides, and all that will be taken into account. But as Rich said, will be to get some numbers into your hands, to get some feedback, to allow us to move forward with the intent of then having really finalized proposal, that will come to you at least two weeks prior to your first meeting in August. That's after we went through process of presenting information, getting some feedback, using that to hone the budget proposal, and then that way you'll have at least several weeks in advance of your very, your first meeting in August. The whole month of August, of course, you know, you have at least two meetings, and the first meeting in September formally to work, deal with the budget. So our intent is to get information out to you, get feedback, so we can move forward and finalize our responsibility.
Also, I would hope we could build in there, I know last year we had an open-to-the-public session here, not a great turnout, but it did give us an opportunity to talk, or at least possibly consideration, depending on how everything goes, you know, is, are we going to be able to budget without an increase in tax or not? But if things would get into maybe a tough, decisions need to be made, that maybe we could have a special meeting with the council to have at least open dialogue between the six of us, to try to better understand what we want and the direction that we're going.
I have no problem with that, yeah. Obviously, we want to, our job as administration is put together a proposal, we'll get the numbers, get some feedback from you. Last time around, you provided feedback, there were some significant changes that occurred in that final budget, when we realized that there were important areas where you as a council would not be comfortable making those reductions. There will be a public forum, again, you're right, hopefully, we're going to try to promote it more, maybe people will be a little more, you might say, cognizant of the fact that it's going to be held, you know, clearly that'll be something that will be replayed too, as though our normal meetings are. And so the more input we are able to obtain, the better job we're able to do. You know, it, I'm sure once it comes to you, depending on final, that's obviously your opportunity then to fine-tune it in your arena.
Yeah, and Dan, the only reason why I'm asking, I just want to get to the very end, to where we're sort of scrambling and trying to decide what to do. So I, everything you've said, I'm happy to hear. I think it sounds like we're moving in the right direction, and I'm happy to hear that, and hopefully it'll be a very pleasant process to get through.
It's never totally pleasant, but it's not nearly as arduous as it was two years ago. Doesn't mean everything's going to be, you know, hunky-dory, so to speak, there will be tough decisions to be made, but we're not facing the uphill climb to the extent we were two years ago.
Mr. Sullivan.
I just want to clarify something about last year's budget process and even years past. We started doing preliminary numbers well ahead, but we do not have exact numbers from county till they certify them August 20th. That makes it possible for us to get a notice out for publication, because they have to publish at least five days before, we typically have missed the Bellevue leader at that point. So last year, when we did this, we had our next meeting in September, which I think was like September 12th or 13th, it was fairly late. So we had our second reading at that time in public hearing, and then we waived three readings and went and passed that budget that night. And there were people that were upset that we didn't let that have enough time and have a third reading. First of all, we couldn't have a third reading, and more importantly, we had three public hearings on that budget with the exact numbers on the last public hearing. So we had plenty of hearings on it, as well as ability for people to speak. I think some people, when we got to waiving the second reading, didn't like our budget, but they probably weren't going to like our budget when we got to the third reading either. It's the beast that was dealt us. I mean, we were in a circumstance that August 20th, we got to get publication in, we got to get these things done, and then it has to be to the state by September 20th. That is an extremely tight window to try to get everything done.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's not near as serious as the budget, but I think it is though, so I'm going to say something. I want to compliment the Parks Department on the outstanding job they did in the cemetery this Memorial Day. I went through and I, actually, I went through three different times to pay my respects to friends and relatives and individuals that I know up there, and it was a humbling experience to see the outstanding job that they did and the care that they took to represent Bellevue in our cemetery. I was humbled with it. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
I would echo and appreciate all of the memorial services I happened to attend along with Councilman Modri, the service at the Eastern Nebraska Veterans Home, and it was good to see people turn out supporting the remembrance of people that have sacrificed so much, including police officers and firefighters who put themselves on the line. Well, I want to say thank you for all that service. Then moving back to the budget, I also would like to thank our finance department and Mr. Saverson, and our administrator and mayor, and the council, because in the time that I have been on this council, we have made great strides in more accountability, more public input, and this last month or over a month, we had input from the public on the website that people could answer a survey and give their impression of where they wanted priorities. Every single time, and this is a biennial budget, which is an improvement on its own, we have increased public input, we have increased opportunities for the public to be involved, we have made more difficult decisions along the way, but always in the open, and our finance department has been looking at these issues and giving us all along, all the information, more information than some of us can even fully digest. So I think the process is greatly improved. Nobody really likes to raise taxes, but when the public came at the last biennial and said, the choice is either we raise slightly the property tax, and which at that point, after the recession in 2008, valuations had dropped, they didn't take effect immediately, but when I looked at my actual property tax statement, even with the increase, it was the same. There was no increase whatsoever. Now, on a house, my value, there's a lot more expensive houses, but there are cheaper ones. So I think we listened to the public, even when we had to make that difficult decision. And as Dan Burlowitz, the city administrator, said, there were some additional cuts. Councilwoman Blood and I were the only two that made those cuts at that time, in addition to what the mayor had already made, and what the administration and the finance department had already made. And we listened to the public, and in listening to the public, they said, we don't want to cut any deeper, we want service. And that's almost always the case. People want service, they just want somebody else to pay for it. So in this case, they said, we're willing to pay for it. And to the citizens of Bellevue, I thank you, in addition to all of our staff, administrator, mayor and council, because I think together, we have been making some very wise decisions, we have been moving the city forward, and every time, every year, we have increased the process, we've increased the effectiveness, and I feel good about that. So thanks to the administration, thanks to the mayor, council, and the finance department, and all of the departments and staff.
Mr. Burks.
I wanted to take an opportunity to give a brief update on the survey that Don mentioned on the public outreach. The feedback we received this year was even more so this year than last. We had over 900 completed surveys, we had almost 1,300 people that started that survey. The comment section is 280 some odd pages long, but this year's comments are much better than last year's. This year's comments are constructive, they're, the people took this seriously. Right now, I have a UNO intern and MPA grad, Daniel Withorn, who is doing this as part of a capstone project, and what he's doing for us now is he's going to summarize those comments like we did last year, but he's also going to do a research regarding the technology we used and why the people who started the survey did not complete it. We believe there's a technical issue for most of those, and Mr. Withorn's going to evaluate what that technical glitch may be, so we don't have the same problems next year. So I expect the summary of the results sometime this week, and once I get them, I will submit them to Mr. Burlowitz, and Mr. Burlowitz will make sure that they're distributed once he gets to review them.
Thank you, Mr. Burks. Councilwoman Blood.
Larry, I think it was obvious that it didn't work well on smartphones. I think that's a priority. Demographically, more people are investing in smartphones than in home computers, and so we need to make sure that the next time we do a survey, that it is fully accessible on a smartphone.
Absolutely, we're working, we're going to do that research, yeah.
Are there any other questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Burlowitz. Item number fourteen, public requests to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or an employee or member of the general public. And City Code 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speaker shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. First, like everybody else, in regard to supporting our police, this is a, this is a situation where the police officer got killed. I hope that through that terrible situation, that we become to respect the police much more than we have throughout the entire country. I hope that everybody had as nice a Memorial Day weekend as my family and myself did. As you all know, since the beginning of the public requests to be heard, I've spoken about over 150 times, and I've made many suggestions and recommendations. I want to thank you for the one that I, I mentioned a number of years ago about eliminating the, eliminating the pre-council meetings. And so I think that's, that's going to help some younger people, other people get to, maybe want to try to be on the city council. The other thing that, that has happened is that of all these recommendations and suggestions I've made, they've basically been ignored. I think it's time that the ones I've given be given some serious consideration and put on the, put on the agenda so we can discuss those. I will be mentioning those on my website, chuckfrederick.com. Interesting thing was when Mayor Sanders and myself had debate last fall, the, a couple things happened, more than a couple, but one of them was that when I talked about how good Papillion was doing, the mayor suggested maybe I should move to Papillion. Well, I didn't move, but unfortunately, I think more people are moving to Papillion from Bellevue, and many of the businesses are going to Papillion versus Bellevue. So we have to turn that around. The other thing she said also was that, don't look at my website. Well, I think you really should look at my website and look at it for the next three months, because I'll be having a lot more information on that than I, than I do now. I still have quite a bit on here, but I would just ask that the public look at that website, and maybe that will help them counsel you people and maybe make you some right decisions. Thank you very much.
There others that would like to speak at this time? See none, we'll go on to item number fifteen, executive session, none, sixteen adjournment. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Next council meeting, Monday, June 8th. Thank you, and have a good evening.